2025 Study Meeting Livonia City Council. Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Honorable Councilman, Scott Morgan?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Morgan. All right, good evening, everyone. This meeting sets the agenda for the 2015th regular meeting, which is a voting meeting that will take place on Monday, April 28th, where tonight's item will be officially voted on. I will note that we are missing Councilwoman Bzinski as she is traveling back from Asia. So wish her safe travels and we'll see her in the coming days. I'm gonna jump right into audience communication. The council has set aside 30 minutes for items not on the agenda. If you'd like to speak during this time, make your way to the podium, name and address, and you've got three minutes.
I'll be quick.
There you go.
Christopher Martin, the great state of Michigan. Just want to clarify something here, okay? Two weeks ago, this is concerning, I should say, number four on the consent agenda from the seven o'clock meeting, and this was the award of bid for the bathroom construction from budgeted funds. Two weeks ago, it was brought up, this discussion here, and Linda Shield asked it to go into committee. And Mr. Donavich said, if there's no objection, okay, put it on the consent. A question was asked from the audience to you, Council President, that what was that, what had just happened at that time? And you stated it was to put it into the committee. Now, on the seven o'clock meeting, it says award of bid. So you guys voted the award of bid. That's the way, okay, now, people are shaking their heads at me here, okay? Because my understanding was that you vote on what the words are here, not what people say. So the question is, what did you vote for at the last meeting? Was it the approval of the funds for it? Because that's what it says here. Approval of the funds.
When we get to, right following this, when we get to the council communications, I'll see if our city attorney's in a position to answer it right now, and if not, I will get you an answer.
Well, okay. You got a deal.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Good evening.
Hi, good evening.
Name and address, the floor is yours, you've got three minutes.
You got it, I only need three minutes, I'll be quick. My name's Jackie Graham, I live at 29552 Oakview Street. I am one of the city council candidates. I know the city center is a very hot topic, and it'll continue to be a hot topic all the way until we vote, including myself. But I just want to let residents know that I want to talk to you about other things as well, not just the city center. I know it's going to influence everyone's quality of life, their finances, including myself, but I also want to talk about other things. I want to continue to talk about public safety, economic development, our infrastructure and roads, our parks and rec, how we can be fiscally responsible in other ways. I want to be transparent, I want to have communication, I want to talk about our neighborhoods and community development, and I want to make sure that our city stays clean and well-maintained. So I just want to encourage everyone that, you know, if you do see me out and about, please, approach me, ask me questions, contact me on Facebook, Instagram, bother me, I don't even care if you knock on my door, I'll answer. I want to hear from you, and I don't just live here, you live here too. And I will probably, I'm gonna live here the rest of my life, and a lot of people are going to live here the rest of their life as well. So I want to make sure that we work together to make sure that Livonia stays a place where we want to live.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Good evening, sir.
Hey, good evening, everyone. My name's Alex King, I live at 19246 Merriman Road. I'm also a candidate for Livonia City Council. I'm actually here to comment as the community vice president for the Livonia J.C.s. We're gonna be hosting a Lagers for Learning benefit for the Living and Learning Center Saturday, April 26th, from 6:00 to 11:30 p.m. If you go to our Livonia J.C.'s Facebook page, you can get tickets, and it's in support of a good friend of, a good friend of mine that we lost a few years ago, Renee Geisinger, Renee Strong Forever, and there's gonna be an appetizer bar, live music, brand-new history as well, and it's at St. Mary's Cultural Center. So everyone here is welcome to attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Uh-oh. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, John Pastor, and I'm not running for city council. No, just give you an update on the scooters, and I appreciate the, for the last meeting, but we just have to meet with Wayne County to do our pre-con and meet with the city, and then we'll be getting started. So hopefully next week, we'll be getting started on the scooters and the ice cream shop. Just giving you an update.
Can't wait. Appreciate it, man. Good evening, man.
Stuck around.
There you go.
A couple of things, the light out at Five Mile Farmington, I experienced that today, and the reason that happened was they're doing construction on a building area, I think you've seen it, they, it's all block right now, and they were, they were running the power into that building. So what I was surprised about is it requires a permit to do that, a time and place permit. So they knew they were turning power off, and that light would no longer exist, so the actual, the, it should have been sitting there, actually, the generator. Seven Mile, Seven Mile Road. I was living in Windridge Village when they built Seven Mile Road, and they widened it, and I had conversations with the folks doing it. So this was an experiment, and it was a successful experiment. I got a chance to talk with our Congresswoman, and I begged her, and I'm begging anyone who will listen, drive on Seven Mile Road, Farmington, towards Middlebelt East. That road is almost 40 years old, and it's perfect. Going west, it's horrible. So when they built this road, this was a European model. They did a deeper bed, they did a coarser first layer, and they poured two lanes at a time. And it was successful, and it should have been the model for every road we've built in Michigan since. Drive that road. What happened was they've got bad concrete. That place and the people providing the concrete went out of business. So that was the problem. Last thing I'll say is, I've been in this town a long time. I've been here before Bates. So I'm, I'm serious. Before Bates. Before they widened Five Mile. I've been here long, find someone who's lived in Livonia longer than me. What year?
What year?
Yeah.
Fifty-three.
Okay, you beat me.
Oh, my gosh.
Thank you. Well, thank you for finding them.
Mr. King's a baby.
But, but, I've witnessed a lot of stuff. When this thing was built, when the, and there's been a lot of missteps along the way, I'm sorry to say. And I can, I remember when they shut down the racetrack, they built, goes on and on and on. And the phrase that comes to mind is frequently wrong but never in doubt. Frequently wrong but never in doubt. And this is what is happening today. And I come to these meetings, and I see money misspent, $12,000 hot water heater, and it's unbelievable to me. And you're asking for a blank check, this blank check, when the history of misuse of public dollars is everywhere in this city. The lease signs, there's so many, it's a distraction.
Mr. King, that's time. Thank you, sir. I did want to give the hands for that, but Mr. King doesn't need that, he's good. Good evening.
Hi, so I wanted to talk about a couple of things. The first is the new library. I'm very optimistic about the project.
So if you're talking about specifically the project, you gotta wait for item one. If you're holding for something else, the floor is yours.
Oh, yeah, can I talk about then Clement Circle then?
Yep.
So real quick, for Clement Circle, I know they're rebuilding the road.
Can you give us name and, just your name, I know you did.
Justin Gooch.
Yes, thank you.
So for Clement Circle, I know they're looking to do engineering to fix the pathway. I think it would be very well worthwhile looking into if it's possible to do some kind of basin. I don't really know a lot about construction, so forgive my ignorance, but it always floods. And when I'm doing my Pokemon going, it basically gets in the way of walking when there's a pod.
You know what, Justin, this one's also on the agenda for item number nine, we're gonna touch base on it.
Okay.
We got you.
Awesome, appreciate it.
All right. There we go. Thank you, Councilman Donavich. Good evening.
As if you, you didn't have, you don't have enough of me, right, today? Deb Christensen, resident of Livonia. Two things. First thing is, Vice President Tashnik talked about in the seven o'clock meeting, the businesses because of all the construction. I just want to bring to your attention that businesses are hurting on Plymouth Road, right where it meets the construction there by Levan and Newburgh. One of them, I have a good friend that works at Supernatural, and they are, they're hurting because there's no easy way to get into their parking lot. You just, you go down there, and there's, you're like, how do I get there? And then second thing is, a gentleman commented or asked a question if the property was sold in which Noble sits on, and we were told that no, it is not sold, but my question is, is the property for sale? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other audience communication? Seeing none?
Oh, wait, he's coming, he's coming.
Uh-oh.
Uh-oh.
Good evening.
Hey, guys, how's it going?
Good.
So, David Cullen, Livonia resident, school board trustee, library commissioner, and local business owner. Sorry I'm late, I just got from my meeting across the street, and just want to come up and share with the council, in all the four capacities I just listed, I see the millage.
Okay.
Am I on the wrong topic?
Wrong topic. This is just, no, this is just general, we're, item number one, we're getting there.
All right.
You made it, we held it for you.
I'll be back up, thanks, guys.
Thank you. Any other audience communication for items not on the agenda? Seeing none? I'm gonna jump it, yes, I'm gonna move right back to council for council communication. I'll hand it over to Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to get back to Mr. Martin on the whole consent agenda. I'm reading the minutes. In the minutes, we referred it to capital outlay, infrastructure, and put that on consent. So what was on consent was voting to put the award of bid into the capital outlay and infrastructure committee. We were aware of that when we, when we voted that way, but it just is, it is a little confusing, I can see where you would see that on here, that that would be confusing. I concur with you on that. But what we actually voted on was referring it to the capital outlay and infrastructure committee.
And Mr. Martin, I know you can't speak, I'm gonna ask, I know Mr., I'm not gonna put Mr. Fisher on the spot, but we'll get more of an explanation, I'll have it for you by next meeting. Anything else from council?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd just like to call out a great resident here, Joe Gillum. He just, during the break, he gave me two sugar-free bars that he makes. He does a fantastic job, if any of you have ever had his chocolates, and they're made in Hawaii, all natural, and, no, he's just, he's so great. He brings chocolates to a lot of different things in Livonia, and I just want to recognize what a great small business entrepreneur he is. Thank you. You're welcome.
I see, I see five other spots here, I don't see my candy bar, but that's fine.
I'll share, I'll share. Sugar-free, by the way.
Councilman Morgan, did you want it?
Yes.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to say that, you know, if the city attorney is available to answer that question, that would be good. I think everyone probably wants to know the answer.
Sure, Mr. Fisher, the floor is yours, if you'd like to rebut it.
Sure, absolutely. So what appears on the agenda is the original item from the study session. That was the, just the overall heading for that item, and then the action that was taken at study appears in our notes and what goes to the clerk as the actual resolution that was formed. So that's the, that's the cause of that discrepancy there. Again, we were just voting on that overall item, and the, the action that the council had taken at the study session was the resolution that we were voting on tonight.
Thank you for the clarification. Thank you for the clarification. We'll see, I wish I could, but, you know, maybe after the meeting, we could see if we'd take it offline. Anything else from council? Seeing none? We're moving in right into new business. Number one is a request for consideration of placing millage request on the August 2025 primary election ballot. This comes to us from the office of the mayor for the purpose of civic center campus site improvements, and I will say, we do have new data. Mayor, before I hand the floor over to you, audience, I know that there's a lot of passion surrounding this item, where we're gonna have a presentation by the administration, by the mayor's office, council's gonna kind of potentially go back and forth, but I will ensure that we have audience communication on the item, and it will be two minutes because this is an action item. So when that time does come, make your way, you know, see if you can get in lines. I know it's not fun to stand, but at least just to keep everything moving. So that's the flow. Sit back, and I'm gonna hand over to the mayor.
Good evening, council, and thank you very much. So tonight is the night. This is the one that we've been waiting for, for a really long time, a chance to take all of the work that we've all done in various committee meetings and bring it to you now for a final presentation, to ask for you to place this item before the voters on the August ballot. In addition to leadership staff that's with me this evening, we also have Paul Tierrow. He's a partner with Plant Moran in Real Point, and he's our primary contact as the project manager on the city center plan and projects here this evening. Paul is familiar to many of us, not just from his work here on this project, but for his work across the street with Livonia Public Schools. Livonia Public Schools engaged in a process very similar to this quite some time ago, and have experienced a great deal of success as a result of it, so we're glad that Paul has made his way across the street to help us with our program. Just by way of background, Plant Moran is currently managing $6 billion in public sector projects throughout the state of Michigan, including many projects just like ours. We also are expecting a representative from Miller Canfield, that's our bond counsel. So if we have any bond questions, in the event that they're not able to attend this evening, we will turn those questions over to Carter Fishu, who's been managing that portion of the project for us. So, all right, the Livonia Built Bond Proposal, what is it? It is an investment. It's an investment in our safety, our children, and our future. It's gonna ensure that we're able to attract and retain quality police officers and firefighters, and get some much-needed upgrades to our police stations, and our police station and our fire station, and it's gonna help us to keep our young families in Livonia by ensuring that they have access to a quality library, safe walkable bike paths, and a city center plaza where everyone can come together. So it's a solution that calls for us to invest, not just in buildings, but in belonging, in places where our children learn, where our neighbors gather, and where our first responders thrive. That's the Livonia Built Bond Proposal, in a nutshell. Tonight, we're asking you to place on the ballot in August, on the 5th, a millage that will ask Livonia voters to invest 1.43 mils for the next 25 years to bond for a $150 million capital improvement project needed to deliver on the vision that Livonia was promised more than 60 years ago. For 85% of our, of our residents, their investment would be less than $18 per month, with the average homeowner investing $12 per month. Now calculating the impact that this is gonna have for each homeowner can sometimes get a little bit confusing, so the City of Livonia has developed a tax calculator, and it will go live after you vote on the millage. Until now, we don't know what to populate it with, but we will soon, when you're finished voting on this, hopefully at the end of this month. There is also a city website, livonniabuilt.gov, that is gonna house all of the information as it relates to this bond. So plenty of information that will be coming, again, as soon as and if it gets passed by the city council. So let's dive in, though, and for talk for just a minute, and I know you've heard me talk about this before, but we always have different listeners, and I think it's important to go back to the beginning and talk about why is it that we feel the need to do this? What is compelling our city to take on this huge challenge? Well, first of all, Livonia is facing a population decline. At the same time that our population is aging, a lot of areas in our peer communities, they're not seeing those same impacts, they're not seeing that same population decline as we are. Our residents are staying in their houses longer, and actually, that's actually a really good thing. But at the same time, we're not attracting those young professionals, and we're not attracting those young families that we need. This is gonna lead to an aging population, and as a result, we're gonna see a shift in our demographics that's probably gonna result in stagnation. Probably is probably not the right word, because last week, we had a chance to talk with some folks that specialize in looking at the U.S. Census data. And in looking at the census data, they confirmed this trend for us. They confirmed the fact that as a result of a declining population, and this is happening all over the state of Michigan, that if cities that are not able to step up and do something, they will see themselves going absolutely nowhere in the future. Here's what they found when they dove in, though, on some of those reasons and some of the things that were working in other communities. Cities that have a thriving city have made a commitment to attract younger residents. They're activating their outdoor spaces for more recreation opportunities, and they're providing diverse housing stock, like apartments, like townhomes. Because the bottom line is that without an influx of young professionals and young families, we face a future that has fewer resources, fewer financial resources to care for those amenities that we have all grown to really love, those things that keep us safe, that give our kids places to stay active, and help us engage and remain active as we age. The data shows, and this was kind of scary, that over the course of the next 25 years, much of what Livonia as a hometown has come to cherish will be at risk, and there is nobody that's come into our rescue. There's nobody that's gonna change any of that. This is one we're gonna have to figure out for ourselves. So we've spent the past six years, you, me, the administration, everybody combined, trying to invest in things that we know are gonna make a difference in helping us to attract and retain those young businesses and young families. We reintroduced a defined benefit program. As a result of that, and some historic wage increases for both police and fire, we've been able to get back to some success. So what does this path to success look like? You know, sometimes the best way to envision a solution to a problem, I've always found, is to ask yourself the question, what if? So let's give that a try. What if we were able to build a place that had a police station that would help us to attract and retain quality police officers in a building that was designed to provide the highest level of service to Livonia residents while keeping our officers safe in a state-of-the-art facility? A police station that was designed to be a police station right from the very start, unlike what we have now, which is a repurposed water and sewer building that was built in 1961. And what if that police station was built closer to the courthouse to improve the efficiencies in those operations? And so instead of one that's built over a creek that leaks on a regular basis and causes water damage, we have one that's located in a place where it really provides efficient operation. What if we had a police station with one functioning HVAC system versus one with five different HVAC systems that cobbled together, all sometimes keep people warm and sometimes keep people cooler, maybe in the right season, not always on time? And what if, as somebody mentioned, I think it was Councilman Donavich earlier, we had a station that from the very beginning understood that we were gonna be having female police officers in it? And we provided the appropriate space for that, as well as disabled employees. And what if we were able to upgrade all of our fire stations so that both equipment and personnel fit into those fire stations? Chief Jensen recently on Channel 7, on the news there, was, gave a really in-depth story on what some of those major problems are. As a result, we have heard from people in the community that are seriously concerned about the fact that carcinogens are being cleaned off gear right next to where people eat and sleep, and that in fact, there are no special areas for women firefighters in these buildings, and that we don't have the adequate space for the size of apparatus we live in, that we have in our fire stations now. I'm gonna step back here. And the role of our libraries is changing in our communities as well. So we're gonna ask ourselves there, what if? What if we were able to keep and attract young families in Livonia by assuring that they had access to a state-of-the-art library that truly was the heart of the community? It was the jewel of the city center project, and it's positioned that way on the city center campus. What if? What if that library accommodated everybody at all phases of their lives? What if it was rich with modern technology and maker spaces and more meeting rooms to accommodate programs that reflect the changing needs of our city, those that were reported in our long-range strategic plan for the library? And what if that library, at a very bare minimum, had places to plug in our devices? As hard as it is to imagine, our library was built at a time where not everybody walked into that building with their own personal computer or phone that they needed to charge. So accessing outlets becomes really difficult. When we really stop and think about that inadequacy alone, it ought to compel us to think about reconfiguring this space. And what if that library was 20,000 feet smaller, and yet it had more space for programming? Because the square footage in the building was simply used better, and it cut down on some of our operating costs, and it cut down on some of our energy costs. So what if we designed a city center that was authentic to Livonia, something that understood Livonia's problems and addressed Livonia's needs? We call these authentic moves, and they, we believe, are going to be the key to our success. This is one of those things that we, as a group, have spent a lot of time talking about and identifying. We've watched as other communities have not been as successful in building out projects like this, and we have worked really hard to learn what those mistakes were so we don't repeat the errors. Our, our way of not repeating those errors is to know what is true and authentic to us. So let's talk for just a minute about what those authentic moves are. The first one is that we understand that we need a greenway. Letting that serve as a gateway to our community, a gateway to better health, a gateway as a connector to Ford Field, to Rotary Park, and beyond that. This is what connects Five Mile to Farmington Roads. This is a place for parades, for strolling art exhibits, and for families to simply walk through or bike through. It's a path that encourages people to take the road less traveled either on bike or on foot, and to stay healthier while they're at it. This is what young people are demanding in their communities. This is what we have a chance to deliver. People are asking for a central park where people can come together to celebrate culture, art, and history, where they find and build family traditions. In this plan, it begins with a two-acre park, as was stated, that is bigger than the Kellogg Park, and it resides right at the heart of the city center. This is where the work that we've already done in building out Knee Hazel Park and all of the memories around it are gonna help us to build and enhance more of what's important in Livonia, never losing sight of the fact that keeping our families safe is central to what we do, as well as keeping our families together. Next, we want to focus on a passive recreation area that uses smart design to create a water feature surrounded by dense woods and boardwalks with trails and places to observe nature, and we put it right in the heart of the city center area. Now this is something that we don't have in our community already. This is amazingly unique to this project. And all the while that we're making these changes, we're placing our city buildings along one side, as far east on the property as we can get them, we're putting a city hall, the library, a police station, and parking for our police officers. And we're doing it with intent. The intent is to protect that woodlands area back there, so that we can create more of a nature area on the civic center campus. We're also doing a smart thing by connecting the library to the city hall. This is one of the ways that we get a chance to help to shrink the footprint of that building so that some of those combined and shared spaces can be used by both the city hall during the day and the library in the evening. Another piece of smart design that is unique to Livonia and authentic to what we try to do in maintaining a strict hold at our city budget. All of this lines everything up, and it clears some space for developers to come in. This is not the city funding this portion of the project. This is the piece that is meant to grow organically, because we have created some gravity around it. A city center with unique dining experiences, with exciting retail options and restaurant venues, the housing options that our young people are asking us for, and as a result, our kids see a future for themselves in our city, because that's the bottom line. So we want to make sure that our kids are finding their way back to Livonia. Now finally, what if we were able to stop losing not just our young people, but more than $550 million a year in retail demand to our peer communities? We had our friends from the Livonia Chamber of Commerce experience the other day, take a look at our data and how much money we were leaking to communities nearby us, and that was a bit of a set. that was a bit of a staggering amount. So I want to take you on a little journey, want to take you and fly you through what this city center campus is going to look like. So if you're here, and we're going to launch from the top of Bates, noting that of course, Bates stays exactly where it is, you'll notice that the buildings are built closer to the road, and they have zero setbacks. There's plenty, and you'll notice this as we go through, plenty of on-street parking and a lot of parking arrangements that have been built into this concept. It's important to remember, though, that this area that we're talking about now is not, I repeat, is not paid for with bond funding. Rather, the municipal buildings that you see at the top of your screen that show up in yellow, those are the designs and the developments that are here to spark future development, to spark the city center area. So, let's roll the tape. The city's got to continue to own the property that you see up front. We're going to work with developers and public-private partnerships to help build what the community wants and needs: apartments, townhouses, restaurants, retail operations, bars, plenty of places for people to come and gather and socialize. We're now at the end, we've cut through the Knee Hazel Park, and we're going to stop here just for a moment because this is the entrance to Festival Street. This is just one of the many gathering areas where people are going to be able to come to, that are going to turn into favorite spots, for sure. You're going to see a couple name or two as we move along here, and please forgive us, but we do try to have fun with what we're doing. So you'll see McCullough's Pub on your left, and you'll see Tashnik's Pierogies slightly past that. Look real quick on the right, there's an ice cream shop that's named after Linda Scheel for the sake of this demonstration, and next to that, a Laura Toys toy store. We thought it only important, it very important, that we include you in this design. Now, you may recall, and we're going to stop here for a minute, because back when Livonia Vision 21, the zoning ordinance was passed, part of that ordinance, what it did was, it now allows for retail and restaurants on the lower floors of buildings with residential built above that. The new ordinance also allowed for on-street dining. So those are some of the features that you begin to see coming to life in this downtown area. As you approach the end of Festival Street here on your left, not to be left out, is Donavich's Diner, and the Central Park and the new library just start coming into view as you're heading toward the end of Festival Street. Now, we're going to stop here for a moment, and we're going to take a look at the Central Park. The Central Park is bordered on both sides, again, by retail and restaurant opportunities, but the park itself is a really cool experience. This is going to give us a chance to build out many of the amenities that we've already heard from residents that they want, but it's also going to give us a chance to step back and ask people again what they'd like to see in this central gathering area. As we said, it's a two-acre park, so it is large enough to accommodate things like an outdoor amphitheater, like a splash pad, and a playground, and a place for people to gather for large concerts and fairs and festivals and things like that. So if you want to get the video going again, we'll cruise through the park here. We're going to kind of come in as we're flying over the top of it, and let you experience the park just a little bit. Sometimes it's hard to imagine that we actually have the capacity and the ability to put something like this on our campus, but we're talking about redeveloping 40 out of the 72 acres that we have available to us. 27 of those can be turned to developers for that retail residential experience, and the rest, we're going to take care of building out ourselves. So as you come here, we're going to turn left in a little bit, and we're going to take you down that greenway that we talked about as being the main thoroughfare that runs through this campus. We're going to turn left at Morgan's Steakhouse here, and we're going to take you to the police station and the police parking garage, which are both located on the right-hand side. One of the key things to this bond proposal is that it gives us a chance to move all of our police vehicles inside a building, keeping them safer, keeping our officers safer, and making sure that there is a longer life to our fleet. I'm going to want you to stop right here for a second and take a look at where the police station has been positioned on the campus. The police station is now positioned behind the courthouse, as we said, adding some efficiency. Parking has been considered in that area as well. But one of the features that is really important, and maybe super hard to visualize here, because these are just boxes that are dropped down as placeholders. These are not meant to be designs or to even give you a remote idea of what that building will look like. The master plan is where we've been focusing our time and attention. But what it does do is it begins to help you to envision what our police chief envisions. He envisions a department that is open to the public, that says welcome, that has community gathering space inside of it, and is still able to keep our officers safe and keep the community safe. But it also has a place where, if you want to safely do your Facebook Marketplace exchanges, there's an opportunity to do things like that. Training, our Livonia Police Officers Academy, all of those opportunities can be housed in that building. So we're going to keep moving here, and get a good look there. Now, we're going to turn and head back down that greenway. Again, your parking garage is on your left. We're approaching a parking lot, which will serve the library and city hall. This is just one of a number of parking areas, and we're going to stop right about here. So you get a chance to look at the library. Again, not a rendering of exactly what the library will look like, but designed to help you to understand that the library is designed to be the front end of that building. People are more interested, way more interested in what's going on in a library than they are in their city hall. The city hall doesn't need to be the gem on this campus. The library needs to be the gem on this campus, overlooking the park, and a lot of that is because they're the opportunity to activate the park. City Hall closes at 5 o'clock. The library stays open till 9 o'clock. The joint programming that can happen between the two is something that we just can't pass up. So just as I told you about what that police station looks like, the library envisions itself as a building that not only faces and opens up to the park, but opens up and uses that green space and that pond area that's located in the back of it to do a lot more educational programming. So we're going to continue to take you down the street, but we are going to zip behind that building, down the greenway a bit. And this is the pond area that we've been talking about. If we can stop here for a second, you begin to look at this, and you can see where across the pond at the other end, there's a bit of a nature stage that can be created. And again, this is an area much like the central city park gathering area that can be designed by residents. A lot of community input is going to be needed in order to get this to the level that we see it getting to. But space is available, amenities will be available for things like a nature trail and the repositioning of our story walk. We can do our storytime there, as well as some of the nature observation on that stage. Boardwalks and sidewalks, everything leading in and about and walking through that ponded area are going to be provided in this millage. All right. So now, we're going to cut back, down that, past the grassy area, we're going to go back up into the area, and as we pull back from this site, you're going to see what it looks like as we look north on the property. And this is the piece, and I say this all the time, this is the piece that takes my breath away, because it's hard to imagine that this could be our future. This can be what happens in our community if we dare to dream big and reposition some of these key city buildings on the east side of the property. Now, what you're seeing here may be shown in a really new way, and it is very cool to look at it this way, but this is really an old idea. Back in 1967, the city contemplated and put down in a plan what they believed was going to be housed on the city center property, and much of what they envisioned was even bigger than what we're dreaming about today. But the city center project in and of itself is not a new dream. I'd like to think that it was one that we've been concocting over the past 18 months, but the fact of the matter is, it started back in 2017 with Livonia Vision 21. And a lot of residents, thousands of residents, as you have all pointed out, came together with some dedicated leaders from within the community, both businesses and residents, to build a master plan. Now, that master plan is still making headlines today because we've continued to work at it. The bond proposal that our city's asking to have placed on before the voters is not the first of its kind, it is actually the second. The first was in 1999, when we turned voters and we asked them to support the development and the build of the Kirksey Recreation Center. Now, when you look back at that recreation center, it is hard to imagine Livonia without it. It's hard to imagine Livonia without the 800,000 people that frequent that rec center every single year, the traffic that it drives, the young families that it in fact did bring to our community and continues to attract to our community. Our neighbors all around us are out there doing much of the same that we're doing right now. They are out there reinvesting in their communities at much the same rate and much the same pace that we are. They're building new facilities in Novi and in Northville. We're looking at new facilities in Westland, everything from a police station to a fire station to a splash pad to a new park in Westland. We're looking at a new Plymouth Township fire station, and just yesterday, Ann Arbor announced that it's going to build a second downtown, a $300 million project. So, are we working really hard to make sure that we're able to keep up and that time doesn't pass our city by? Yeah, we're working really, really hard to not just make sure that time doesn't pass us by, but that our kids don't pass us by. So in the bond proposal that you've got before you today, and you've got the language in your packet, we'll be sure to have Carter go through exactly what it contains, because I do think people are very interested in the words. All the elements have been shown to you. It is a proposal for a 25-year millage with $150 million that we're expecting to borrow, with 1.43 mils locked in as the millage rate. This millage rate will not change much from this point, except to go down as property values increase in our community. And one of the key things that we wanted to make sure of was that this was something that was affordable for most of our residents. So as we said earlier, most of our residents fall into the category where they'll be paying less than $12 a month. 85% of our residents will pay less than $18 a month. 70% of our residents are really interested in making sure that this is a project that comes to our city. And this is data that we've been collecting for quite a while, earlier in the year, that was even before people got a chance to see what the project is. So we all know that Livonia is a place, it's a special place, and I think you agree, it deserves a future. If you didn't, we probably wouldn't be to this stage today. Thriving cities all around us are built by people, and we want to be one of those thriving cities. So maybe the question that remains isn't so much, "What if?" Maybe the question that remains is, are we that generation? Are we the generation that is going to make sure that we continue to invest in our future, in our safety, and in our kids? I want to thank you very much for the time that you've put getting us here today. I'm sure there are many questions. I'm going to try to parse through them, not just with my level of knowledge, but some other key members of the staff may be jumping in as well, so.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. With that, I'm going to go to council first, just to ask some questions to the mayor, maybe to the administration, maybe to Plant Moran, then I'm going to open it up to the audience, and then I'm going to come back to council, if that works for all of you. All right, council?
Thank you, Mr. President, Mayor, thanks. Can we emphasize on the fact that, I know it's been mentioned a few times tonight, but I think it's been lost in the community, is that this bond proposal is not necessarily a downtown bond, not a public safety bond, it is really a municipal building bond. As I've gone through the information over the last year and a half, two years now, that's been the biggest thing to me, is the city buildings are, there's certain city buildings that need to be invested in either way, whether the bond proposal's denied and it doesn't move forward through the council or the residents, or it's approved, either way, we have to invest in these buildings. So this money is only being spent on these municipal buildings, the infrastructure, the park area, that sort of stuff.
You're absolutely correct, and I think now might be a good time to turn to Mr. Fisher so that there is a, you know, no questions, this is what's included, okay? But you're correct. It is a municipal improvement bond that works to improve the buildings that are on the city center campus, and it includes a lot of infrastructure improvement as well, so let's dive in on that.
Sure. So the bond language that's been presented tonight, and that if approved by council would be presented to the citizens at the primary in August, includes funds to renovate five fire stations around the city, funds to demolish and rebuild a police station, and also similar funds as it relates to the library, and the funds necessary to do the attendant infrastructure work on this campus in particular, in terms of, you know, street repairs, underground utilities, those sorts of things. But those items are clearly itemized in the bond proposal, and if approved by this body and then approved by the public, we would be bound to use the funds only for those purposes. And these funds are reviewed by the IRS amongst other federal entities, just because of how we go out for the bonding. So there are very strict requirements, will be audited annually about how these funds are used, and the audit includes making sure that these funds are spent for the purposes outlined in the bond proposal that you'll be voting on tonight.
Thank you, Mr. President. To our city attorney, so my next question to the mayor is, this bond proposal, mayor or anyone else, would last 25 years? So the residents would be paying this bond for 25 years, and at the end of 25 years, it would fall off the tax assessment?
That's correct. And there is also time during the course of it to renegotiate the bond, and sometimes things fall off sooner than that, so there are always opportunities for that. I think it's also important to note, and I know we talked about this a little bit at the last meeting, that it is the intent to issue this bond in two series. The first would be $100,000 or $100 million in that series, and then $50 million in the second series. And that is done with a great deal of intent, again. The idea there is that we're going to borrow the money as we need it. So we know that we're going to need initially the $100 million to get the project jump-started right away. We will borrow no more than 150, it's limited to that with the language that's in the bond proposal. But should we find that we needed to borrow less, that opportunity would be available to us as well. It also lets us get into the bond market at two different times, and, you know, different interest rates could make this a better deal than even the one that we're looking at right now. Many of the numbers that we talked about last time, as you may recall when we really dove in deep on the numbers, not many of them, all of them, are ultimately conservative numbers. We're looking at worst-case scenarios.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anybody else from council? Councilman Morgan, floor is yours.
Yes, Mayor, I have a question regarding this, regarding the public safety millage that we are currently paying, and I do believe that comes up in 2026, if I'm not mistaken.
You're correct.
Are you going to allow that, are we going to try to get that renewed, or are we planning on just letting that go considering we're coming up with this millage right here?
Yeah. Very good question. Now, those millages, they're for very different things. As Councilman Donavich points out, this is a capital improvement millage, it goes to capital. When we get to the millage in 2026, that's for people. That's very different, and it is our full intent to go ahead and ask to renew that millage, keeping things the way that they are.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Councilwoman Scheel.
Thank you. I just have a question back to Mr. Fisher. So in the wording on our bond, it states that, I want to go to, I think it's the fourth line, where it says, "Paying all or part of the cost of acquiring land and buildings." We're not acquiring any land. Can you explain what that means?
Sure. So the reference to acquiring land there is actually a sort of complex legal reference to acquiring any interest in land. Obviously, we already own the parcels that are required for the project. The Five Mile and Farmington land is wholly owned by the city of Livonia. However, there are several usements that run through it that we might have to purchase out the rights to in order to build out in certain areas of the property as it is currently situated. We're still investigating. We're still investigating how much that, that would cost, if there are any costs to that. Frequently, as, you know, as we often give people easements for free, there's often some kind of reciprocal agreements in place there. But that language is just in place so that we can, if needed, acquire easements and other rights that run across our current property.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anything else, council? Right now, oh, go ahead.
Thanks, Mr. President. Mayor, if, if again, if this doesn't get approved, what happens to these buildings? I know we've had assessments done of how much it's gonna cost to renovate and/or just update these buildings. So, for example, this doesn't get approved, what, what's kind of situation are we looking at?
So, I think you mentioned during your report that the, the facility assessment report that we had done by Plant Moran is now a couple of years old. And it indicated that we had 97.5 million dollars worth of repairs that were gonna be needed on the municipal structures that we're looking at right now. Now, time has passed us by and, you know, we haven't been able to do anything major to any of these buildings as we've undergone this analysis. So, that number's up to 107 million dollars now. And we don't have 107 million dollars anywhere in our budget. So, at some point in time, if we plan on even fixing buildings and bringing them up to a good standard, we are probably gonna have to turn to taxpayers to ask them for help and to do that. Other than that, they simply continue to deteriorate.
Mayor, the long-term goal here, phase four, I believe it is, is to have that private development downtown portion of it all. And just for the residents' sake, they're separate in my mind, right? We're talking, from my perspective for the residents, I'm looking at this as investing in our buildings, fixing our buildings, just like Livonia Public Schools, they've passed their millage multiple times or renewed their millage to invest in their buildings. We're asking for a one-time millage. It's, it's gonna expire at the end of 25 years.
That's correct.
So, when we look, when we, we separate that component and do think about the civic center downtown component of this and that private side of this, what happens to, you know, we, we rent land, we sell land, whatever that is gonna look like long-term, there's retail, there's residential. What happens to those proceeds from the taxes, from the sales, from the lease of the land, whatever that may ultimately look like? What happens with those funds from the private development phase of this?
So, that's all money that comes back into our budget. That's the true economic development component that we're looking to fuel here. So, as more money comes in through taxes, then we are able to offset some of these expenses in our general fund. And we're able to improve other buildings throughout the city. We're able to bring better amenity to, to people in our community. We're able to keep growing with our community.
And contribute to maybe this project or other projects again in the general fund?
That's, and you want to attribute the success of that ability to this project. That's, that's the, that's it in a nutshell. I mean, that really is it in a nutshell.
Thanks, Mr. President.
Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, tonight, we're really talking about phase three. And I just wanted, earlier in the regular, a resident had brought up that we should have talked about this being a 200 million dollar project. Actually, if you put in phase one and phase two, it's more like a 227 million dollar project, if my math is correct. And so, really, we were able to find about a third of the money using, you know, grants that we got from the federal government, you know, the county, the state, to do the phase one, and we've got, we've secured the funding with the bond to do phase two. So, now we have to go to the residents for phase three, and this is where the 150 comes in. And really, this is where we have to decide if we want to live in the past or if we're gonna look to the future. And this is, this is where we're gonna have to decide if we want to make that transformational progress. Phase four, not one penny is gonna come from this 150 million dollars millage. That is all gonna be private-public partnerships. Not one hard-earned taxpayer dollar from this is going to phase four. And I think that's where a lot of the misinformation is out there. And I just want to make sure we all understand what we're asking for today and that we're all on the same page as far as this is just phase three.
I was actually glad for that residence, bit of a sales pitch there because we thought about framing it like that for people. And you all know that this is how we've talked about it for a long time. I mean, we knew this was a big, back when Livonia Vision 21 was released, it was a 250 million dollar project. That was the estimated cost on this project. And we all said, before we turn to taxpayers, we've got to figure out whether or not we can get money from anywhere. And we did. We used the COVID opportunity and a lot of our time to go out and raise 20 million dollars. And then we all agreed that before we talked to taxpayers, we were gonna turn inward and we were gonna say, can we save money anywhere? And we did. And it took us a while to make sure that that savings was real and it was realized. But over the course of the two years that we'd started in that program, the actuaries came out and they said, actually, you have saved that money. You should be able to bond against it. And we did. So, now we're on the last leg of this. Now, we're to the point where there is no more money to shake out of government entities. There is no more, more money to trim out of budgets, not this much money anyway. Now, we do need to ask people to reinvest.
Anybody else? Council? All right, with that, I'm gonna go to the audience. And again, if I may, when, you know, make your way to the podiums, and please be respectful. I, I know everybody, you know, there's a lot of emotion. If you guys want to do the jazz hands, we can. But let's just be professional and, you know, keep on task. Name and address. You got two minutes, and you start us off.
Jenny Crowns, 34075 Pembroke. I am familiar with a mortgage, but on a bond, that 100 billion and 50 million, can that be refinanced during the life of that bond? Just like a mortgage could.
Yeah, with this, if it's something like that, I don't want to do too much Q and A. But Mr. Carter, if you've got an answer for it, I'd rather have the residents have the transparency on this.
Yes, over the lifetime of the bonds, it can be refinanced.
Okay. And just to clarify, on the residential and retail property, the land there, will that be sold to the developer or will that be leased to a developer and the city will become a landlord?
Okay, so with that, I'm gonna table that one and we'll get, we'll get you an answer on that. We're taking notes, but I appreciate it. Good evening.
Hello, how are you?
Good.
Jim Bigg again. I was listening to the mayor's words intently and I heard something and I'm sure she misspoke, but the comment about the assessment going down as my home value goes up really hit. Because those were the words she used. Now, I'm not stupid, but I know that nobody in this city is gonna start saying, gee, your home went up 20%. We're gonna cut that assessment down 20%. It's never gonna happen. And, you know, come on, this is being rushed. It's not being presented. Numbers are being thrown up there. I'm sorry, I can't handle the space relationship, but those cars are awfully small, the trees are small, the buildings are huge. There's more building than 27 acres. I have worked on property development. I've seen what 27 acres looks like. I looked at the Tank Automotive Command Development Property. Those buildings are huge and we never showed anything like that on a much larger scale. This should not be presented. I don't think it's ready for prime time. That's it.
Thank you, sir.
Just to clarify, real quick.
Oh, yes.
Just to clarify, real quick, the mayor's comments there, in terms of your, your rate going down, that's a reference to the millage rate. When your, when your property value is assessed at a higher value, the millage rate to pay for that 150 million dollar bond will go down. So, right now, it's projected at 1.43 percent, or 1.43 mils. But if your assessment goes up, the millage goes down accordingly. It's, we're only paying for 150 million dollars, not, no more.
And with that being said, no, I appreciate that. This is good context. Name and address, two minutes.
Justin Gooch, 9971 Garvet. I just wanted to speak briefly about the libraries. Very excited again about the project. I know I spoke a little early last time, sorry. But I just wanted to say that I really hope with the library project, we have a lot of STEM programming available, especially like consideration, like when we build it. I'm not saying battle bots. Battle bots would be awesome, you know. But it would be really cool to have STEM programs. I know I mentioned the LED thing a lot, but just, just consider it, like have actual designs in the front. It allows us to have an art space present. But yeah, I, I love the integration of nature and I hope, I know it's gonna increase our taxes, but I hope the services that the library provides will allow us to maybe, you know, sit back and save $12 a month on seeds, like, you know, and stuff like that. So, overall, I really appreciate the work everyone here has done for it. That's my, that's my time.
Thank you. Good evening. How are you?
Good evening. I'm good. Thank you. My name is Kaylee Cabanau-Reed. I live at 35922 Ladywood Street. I'm a lifelong resident. I'm the executive director of The Spree. And I'm a mom to that very young family that everyone keeps referring to, that we're trying to attract. So, I have a lot of opinions about this, but my main opinion is I think we need to get this on the August ballot. I think this is an important issue. Our residents really deserve the opportunity to weigh in on this issue. And I do welcome more voter turnout in August. I think more in August is better than November. And I think if we have to keep talking about it, we have to keep talking about it until we're blue in the face. Nothing wrong with, you know, repeating yourself over and over about this topic. And as I said earlier, I am the executive director of The Spree and I have plans in the works with our city officials that sit on our board to have a tent at The Spree this year with a virtual reality of this downtown. So, you can come there, get your questions, answers, and we also will have the city clerk's office there who will be registering people to vote. So, if you're not sure how to vote or register to vote and you're not sure how you want to vote on this issue, come to The Spree, have a beer, register to vote, not in that order, and explore your options for our future of Livonia. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Gerald Krasinski, 19488 Bainbridge Avenue. Three points. So, the second phase of the, of the bond would be a 23-year duration if it was offered two years later, if you're only collecting revenue from the millage for 25 years. I don't know if that's true or not. The second question was, we were told that the developers would pay for the development of the land, but we're paying for tearing down all of the existing buildings, correct? And then third, to the point on The Spree, would we be moving The Spree then to the new park? So, okay, I guess that's a no. Thank you.
Thank you. The floor is yours. Name and address, two minutes.
Yep, John Schaefer, 15638 Brookfield again. I assume that accepting or denying the, the bond for phase three automatically assumes phase four. 70% of the residents are in favor of a city center. I am too. I love the idea of new buildings. I love, I, I love that idea of it. I am totally against phase four. I do not think that the privatization of our public land is warranted. It just goes against everything I stand for on that. And so, if we go ahead and approve phase three, is phase four a certainty? How do you break that apart? Because if phase four is coming, then I'm voting no on phase three. Again, you're going for privatization of public lands? How is that going to, what would that look like? The mayor had mentioned we would be taxing the people. Well, what about owning it? We should be getting more money than just taxing them, but again, it shouldn't be an option. I don't think the city should be in the market of being landlords. Otherwise, who does that? Who, who monitors that? Who monitors those buildings? Who does the upkeep? It's gonna be a sale. You have 27 acres going to private. That is wrong. You have two acres, two acres of a park in front of the library, 27 acres of apartments. I think people are interested in having some restaurants and everything, but not at the cost of multifamily dwellings. Again, thank you.
Thank you. And just to give everybody some context, we are writing these questions down. And I know when we get back to the topic, we will start trying to answer some. Good evening.
Hey, everybody. Dave McFarland, 15536 Shady Side. I was a little overzealous before. I'm the right amount of zealous now, so. So, I come to you guys as, I kinda wear four hats on this and I look at it from each one individually. One is as a resident, father with young family. Two is as someone who operates my business in this city more than any other spot in the, in the area. Three is as an elected official across the street on school board, and four is as a commissioner on the library. All four spots tell me that this is the right way to move forward for the future of this city. Primarily because as we keep talking about being attractive, we, it's, it's a fact. We are going to have a large turnover of real estate in the future. We have an older tax base. Those homes will be coming up for sale. How do we attract upwardly mobile, young families to get into our schools, to enjoy our parks? This is what they're looking for, and I know this because with my day job, I help people decide where they're gonna live every day. And what attracts them? To Livonia? And what attracts them to leave Livonia? And it's areas that have vibrant downtowns. So, I believe I'm confident that we have the leadership in this room, on this panel, to kickstart this and that we can get the right folks back in these seats to really make it great. So, I would love to see this on the August ballot. I would love to see some great information and accurate information come out to share with the citizens so that way everyone can make an informed decision in August. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And it's always a pleasure to have you, honestly. Good evening.
Hi, Cindy Fleming-Woodring in Livonia. When the city center library millage was being touted, the city promised that the two, to maintain the two smaller libraries, Noble and Sheldon, or Sandberg, excuse me, through the general fund. The city did not keep that promise. When the rec center millage was being put on the ballot, the residents were promised free use of that facility. The city did not keep that promise. Now, the city is asking for this huge bond proposal for the city center, and there is an ever-changing, shape-shifting, smoke-and-mirrors feel to it. So, how can residents trust the city's intent?
Thank you.
Steve Alexander, 9919 Deering, candidate for Livonia City Council. Three things I would like to ask you to do is a companion document to the millage. So, as we're putting the millage out, one thing the mayor mentioned that was awesome was showing that if we don't do this, if this millage doesn't pass and we wanted to endeavor on repairing our buildings, we would still need to pay something like 107 million dollars, that was the number I heard, to, to do those repairs. So, that would likely mean that we would need to still do this work at some point. So, just showing that, telling that story along the way, I think is super helpful, along with showing a prioritization of the spend for the police and fire, right? Having that near the top, I think there may be some worry along the way that those funds may kind of trickle, trickle down. And if those things are kind of left like for later, we want to make sure those funds are set aside for them so they don't run out, right? You have 150 million dollars and you get to like three years from now, maybe you don't have as much as you wanted to spend on police and fire. It's a mild concern. So, that, and then the last thing is, obviously, this doesn't include, and I understand this doesn't include maintenance and improvements for the rest of the city. But again, in that companion document, if we could address how we will do those things, how are we going to take care of the rest of the city? It's not part of the millage, so if it's not, then how are we gonna do those things? If we could address those three items, I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I, I have to make a comment because I, I think we have to be very cautious and careful. And I know our mayor does that, and I know our administration's done that. But we have to be very careful about mixing any kind of election stuff with this kind of question. And I think one of my former colleagues that was on the school board can attest that Livonia Public Schools got in a lot of trouble for mixing election stuff with an issue that they had. So, as you speak, all of you that are running for council or whatever you're doing out there, be very careful because we have to be careful in City Hall not to use taxpayer funds, taxpayer phones, taxpayer facilities to promote this millage, whether you like it or not. That is, if you know election law, you might want to study it because it's very clear and we can get in a lot of trouble for doing that. And I know we're all aware of that, but I want to remind people of that. So, when I hear different suggestions, it gives me a little bit of pause because some of those election laws, I was involved in. And, and we gotta be very careful. It's just safeguards of process, that's all. And I'm not saying anyone's doing anything wrong. They're not. I just want to remind folks, when you're out there, you want to be cognizant of that. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. I'm Mary Ann Cleaver, 15552 Alpine, Coventry Garden area. I just had a couple of questions. With the architect that is gonna be working on the police station by the courthouse, will that be the same architectural style? I'm hoping it would be something like that because that's kind of stands the test of time where I believe the rec center will not.
So, I can, if I may, not to take your time, and I, and we'll pause it for right now, just to answer that. We did hire a firm to do a master plan for the entire We did hire a firm to do a master plan for the entire campus. So in theory, they would control the dialogue to make sure all that looks good if it is approved.
Because you said the police station will be a butt to the courthouse.
Correct.
So it seems logical that would be kind of that kind of architecture. Also, I heard that we got close to $20 million from the, is that from the federal government for grants for that senior center?
Correct.
Did that money, was that part of the American Rescue Plan, first of all? Secondly, do you have to go to the senior center? Couldn't it have been gone to the fire stations off-campus that could have used that help? So now you're asking for more money from the residents when I don't believe the senior center should have been a priority. Secondly, is the senior center Livonia project? Or is that a Wayne County project? Because I heard all Wayne County senior citizens will be able to use that facility. And another question or statement I had is, as a senior myself, our water bill, our electric bill, our heat bill, everything is really going up. We're on fixed incomes. Having another cost is, you think it's a little bit, but really it isn't. And with the climate right now, with tariffs and everything, and prices are probably gonna be going up, that's something to consider. And I think that's it. I lost my place.
Well, we've got the mayor. Mayor of.
Mr. Chair, thanks. Sometimes I think when questions get too far astray from what's true, we need to stop right away. And I appreciate you're trying to keep a list, but this one might escape us. About the $20 million that we got for the senior center. Correct, it was state, federal, and county money. The source of all of it was the American Rescue Plan. And the reason that we got it was very specific. We needed to solve a problem that had been created as a result of COVID. That money was very intentionally directed because it met the criteria that the state, the county, and the Fed set for us, that we build something that improved wellness. That's why it's not called the Senior Center. It's called the Senior Wellness Center. That was a very specific term that the federal government asked, actually demanded, that we place in the title of the building. So there were parameters where we qualified for the funding. A police station, a fire station, a new city hall, a parking deck, a green space, a giant park, a greenway, a water feature. None of those qualified. Okay? Just so we're clear.
Thank you.
Well, I also thought that the health of the.
You had, you had 12 seconds left, so I'm letting you use.
Okay. Also, for the American Rescue Plan, I thought it was for the health. Well, that could have been ventilation systems in those places that needed it, including the library. So, thank you.
Thank you. Name and address, and you've got two minutes.
Councilman, Your Honor, thanks for your time to speak. Just a quick question. I don't hear very well. Did, did you say, Your Honor, that it's $97 million?
And sir, address your comments right here.
Rehabilitate, rehabilitate the buildings? $97 million? Is that what it was said?
That was the needs assessment that was completed a few years ago.
To rehabilitate the current buildings.
Over a 10-year.
$97 million. Okay, I'll just, I'm just getting the numbers straight in my head. The question I wanted to ask is, there's a, talked about the landlord option as a money generator for the city, which is a great idea. Has there been any consideration thought about naming sponsorship for like if there's a Riverwalk or whatever it is, maybe the Feldman Chevrolet Riverwalk, or the Amazon Amphitheater or something like that?
Do you work for both of these companies? Are you giving a plug?
I mean, you might, you just, if we can defray some of the costs like that, I'm all for a new, you know, rebuilding or putting a new police station, a fire station. We need that for our first response, so they're healthy. But I'm just wondering about, there's other opportunities maybe to generate some funds that can defray the cost for the.
We have an innovative city, and honestly, these are all great ideas that are being tossed behind the scenes, for sure. So no, those are all great points, and those are definitely taken. I appreciate it.
Mr. Chair, I think we needed to get this.
Yes, sir. What, just for the record, sir?
Sir.
Sir, sir. Can we just get your name, just name for the record? I should have asked you before, but I wanted to make sure you got far enough away. Just for your name, just your name for the record.
We're gonna name City Hall after you.
No, just your name for the record.
My name?
Yeah.
Oh, Gary Smith at 9814 Eccles in Livonia. I'm sorry.
No, you're good. No, I, listen, I'm right with you. I appreciate you.
Smith City Hall, I like it.
Name and address, two minutes.
My name is Jenny O'Connor. I live on West Chicago, on the south side of Livonia. And to echo Steve's comment regarding the breakdown, I think I echo a lot of other citizens' concerns about making sure that the police and fire aren't kind of like left at the bottom of the barrel, or when the project funds start to dwindle, that they just kind of get what's left over. And then for very selfish reasons, I really wish that the bond language could include something about, maybe not like turning Alfred Noble into something, but just leaving the building standing. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Name and address.
Robert Bigga, 29846 Westfield, Livonia. Retired, Livonia retiree, former Human Resources Director, former chairman of the Retirement Board, former Civil Service Commission Chairman, member of a variety of civic association groups. I have been, since the last meeting, attempting to validate the $2.4 million savings so far for retiree healthcare. As a retiree and getting a recipient of the healthcare, I find it very difficult to believe that there was a $2.4 million savings. So I contacted Jerry Sabo, retired Assistant Chief Accountant. He could not give me any information. I contacted Janine Leibel, the current HR Director. She didn't have any information. So I'm still looking for someone in the city to get me that information. Also, according to Chapter Five, Section 16 of the city charter, any changes in the insurance program require a joint approval of the Civil Service Commission and the City Council. I don't know whether those changes were ever taken to the Civil Service Commission, but I, I don't know. Also, what about the maintenance cost on the city buildings during the construction of the replacement? There will be cost for City Hall and also for the library. Also, I suggested before to separate the three issues, police, fire, and the city development. I don't know whether that is still a possibility, but I think it would give you an idea of what the residents really want. Minor issue, I do carry another hat. I'm a Vice President of Spree. Looking at what the development is gonna look like, where are the thousands of cars going to park for Spree?
That is time. We've got your questions. I appreciate it. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Maria Mitter, and I live at 9371 Iowa Street. And I have never spoken at a city council meeting, but the whole city center development has really gotten me excited. I am a lifelong resident of Livonia. I have lived here my whole life. My father had a business in Livonia for a very long time. And my whole immediate family lives in Livonia. I'm deeply committed. I serve on the Livonia Wesleyan Chamber Board, and also am a, serve as a member of, excuse me, as the, a member of the Madonna University Alumni Board. So I just come to you in support of this development and would love for you all to really consider this and for our residents to really consider that, you know, the, our infrastructure is failing, as the mayor has shared and others have shared. And to keep putting Band-Aids on buildings is just not a long-term solution. And then if we want to attract and keep young families, we need to do something different. We know that our families and residents are leaving and going to Plymouth and downtown Northville, where communities have activated their, you know, areas where they've been activated to hold community events and such. And so this development would allow for us to do that here and keep our residents here. So I just urge you to consider, and I urge our residents to do the same. So thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Bill McAvoy, longtime resident of Livonia and Wadsworth Street. I hear this, a lot of this money is coming from county, state, or federal governments. And it's encouraging to me until I realize I pay them too, like I pay Livonia. Is that also my money? It's not a big sell anymore.
Can't tell a lie, sir. We're all in this together. Good evening.
Denise Mike of Lancashire wrote, "A couple of things. I would really like to have the police and fire separated, and let's do them first and see how that goes." I'm, Phase Three, if it's just fire and police, fine. Phase Four, let's see how Phase Three goes and then decide which we want to do. 27 acres is a lot. We say, "Well, two acres is bigger than Kellogg. Well, why don't we have five or 10 acres? Why don't we make the statement?" Instead of just going, "It's just a little bit bigger." And most towns I know don't have a downtown on a, on a corner, okay? I've built a home personally. And when I went to the bank for the mortgage, I had to give them plans for the house. And what I was gonna spend, I needed a detailed estimate and everything. We have not seen any details on how this $150 million for any of this is. And I think we need to do more work on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hey, I was going. Mark Lyle, Ingram Street, in Livonia. And just a couple of points. One is, this is a lot of money, especially, you know, it's $150 million, but almost, almost that much in interest. So if you think about the amount of money, it's, it's a lot, so we should do it right. But the main thing I wanted to know is, we're concentrating so much on Five and Farmington to attract young professionals. But my thought is, okay, besides that, what else do we have to offer? We don't have hotspots in other parts of the city, so people are still gonna go to Detroit, you know, and other areas. The only other thing I wanted to say is, you know, we're saying, okay, it's like everyone's saying we're gonna be good for 25 years. We pay this off. We have a library that was built in 1988. We're saying that's past its useful life. So does that mean after 25 years and 10 years, we gotta do this whole thing over again?
Thank you. Good evening, sir. Name and address, two minutes.
Jay Murray, Ravine Drive, Livonia, Michigan. I shouldn't be speaking here. It's inappropriate for me to even weigh in on this. I'm gonna be, I'm technically a member of the media, but I'm also a Livonia residence, resident since 1977. In spring of 2024, there was a political campaign down in Detroit, and many journalists from around the country flew in. And I was in the scrum with them, and we got bored. It was, there was some controversy going on downtown. And so about five journalists from all across the country, including LA, one from New York, they hopped in my car, and I said, "Let's go. I'm gonna show you guys where I live." I drove them around Dearborn. I drove them through Detroit. I showed them Brightmore. They'd never heard of that. Blew their minds. And I brought them to Livonia. We drove around. And I was quite proud of the city. This is where I've spent my entire life. I'm never leaving, and I'm also never running for anything. I just, I dwell here, and I'm proud of this city. And everyone thought it was cool. The journalists I was with thought it was cool. But a comment bugged me. One of the guys from LA that I, one of my colleagues said, "Man, it's, feels like it's the 80s in here." Let that sit for a minute. We're in a building, we're in a building that could be part of a set design for Charlton Heston's Soylent Green from the 70s, the way the construction's built outside. My point being is, my point being is, we have a very 1980s city. I'm not endorsing anyone's plan, although I thought the mayor very eloquently detailed it, and I, I thought that was fantastic. I'm not endorsing anything. But this city needs to modernize badly. We have a 1980s city. It's 2025. And we have people coming from outside in the media coming in, and they're telling me it's an 80s vibe. We must do something, whatever it is.
That's time, sir. I appreciate it. Thank you. Good evening.
Hi.
Name and address, two minutes.
Lori Sook, Kimberly Oaks. I'm all for the city plan to bring, I think it'd be great. I'm more for the apartment part, though, which it doesn't sound like a lot of people are. Living in a home that I've lived in for 30-some years here, I'm tired of shoveling snow, mowing grass, keeping up my house. I'm a widow, so that is something that interests me. Something that the mayor, mayor said about putting the police department and the connecting everything together, and they want to make the police department more opening, where the public can come in. I don't get that feeling now. So I don't, I mean, it seems to me like if, if a few years ago, you knew you were gonna do this, you wouldn't spend a million dollars to put a fence around the police department. And I know that was something to get accreditation for, but maybe you didn't need it right then. I, I don't know. So there's that, and then like the thin blue line. To me, that, that makes a ushing of them. So I just thought that was an interesting comment that you made, that, you know, you wanted the police department to be open for the public to come in and enjoy cops, I guess. I don't know. But, but as far as paying more money for my taxes, I'm not right there yet. But the police, the fire, that's important. I would like to see more apartments and condos and murals on buildings, which there's so many restrictions that we have. You know, you can't have a sign, even if it's not political, you know? They'll come and tell you to take down. And it, it just seems like there's a lot of restrictions, and we are an older city.
That is time. Thank you very much. Any other audience communication? I was about to say, Mr. King.
All right.
What's your name?
I brought my own drawing.
Can I get your name?
This is, oh, Steve King.
Oh, it's Steve King.
Yeah. This is downtown Livonia as seen in 1980, and this drawing was done in 1966. And this actually has a larger green space than what you guys are proposing. Yeah, two acres is nothing. I mean, you can cut that on a riding mower in, what, 45 minutes? It's, it's too small. A couple of things. I went to the meeting where they're talking about naming it, and my suggestion never got voted on. It wasn't put in the hopper, and I wanted to call it Livonia Town Square because I think that has more of the feel of what Livonia is. Livonia City Center is soulless, and it speaks of cement and, and just a soulless place. Oh, man, I'm so in favor of a central gathering place. And the green belt, that's just beautiful. Compliments to, to the mayor on the presentation. Looked, looked beautiful. But what I didn't like is you're using Plant, Moran, Real Point. This is a middleman. They don't build anything. They target cities. I think they take advantage of cities. They come in as an accounting firm for the school district, and then they wiggle their way into projects like this and add $10 million, $20 million to the project. So I would like to see you revisit that. But the other thing I want, very quickly, I'm gonna run out of time. There's a banner at the Ruck Center. "We're gonna have a new senior center, summer of 2025." That is not happening. So if you go on the website, it says December of 2026. That is not happening. It's going to be 2020. It's gonna be later than they said. So the timeline on this is backward. Build the stuff that benefits people the most, the central gathering place.
That's time, Mr. King.
Yeah.
No, thank you.
Yeah.
Good evening.
Hello. Laura Janik on Munger Street.
Um, I took a few notes today, I guess I'm the last one, I'm not sure, but, um, somebody mentioned modernizing, um, you know, I like modern. Um, Plymouth, I wouldn't, I don't know if I call Plymouth not modern, a lot of those buildings are from the eighteen hundreds, and they're still doing, doing pretty good, but, um, some of the numbers that we're putting out, ninety-seven million dollars over ten years. Um, I'm not gonna, um, say that's not true, but, but what about, when we're using these new buildings, are we gonna say, what's the cost over ten years of that? Shouldn't we use the same formula? Say, it's gonna be a hundred and fifty million over ten years, it's gonna be 250 million over ten years? I mean, these, it's not the mathing for me. Um, and again, it seems like that library just was a, a, an afterthought. I, I hadn't heard anything about it, even the council didn't seem to know about it. Um, and then we hear things like, there wasn't enough outlets? I mean, maybe I need to tell you about my builder. Um, and also, a retention pond, to me, is, is, is not a nature park. A retention pond is a retention pond. Um, some of the pictures, they look pretty cool, but, um, it kinda looks like Disneyland. I've never seen anything in Livonia that looked like Disneyland. We can't even fix Rotary Park, I'm sorry, it's late and I'm tired, I, I'm sorry. Um, many libraries have, um, renovated, old libraries, mid-century libraries, many, many. If you wanna, call me on the phone, I'll tell you, I'll talk for hours about that. Um, fixing Noble, that would bring people into the south side. It's 10,000 people that could walk, talk about walkability, walk to, to the Foodland store, walk to the library, walk to the park. That brings people in. Um, and I'd like to be known as the generation that had some sustainability. Uh, you know, the new, some of the new stuff's great, but we need some sustainability, too. Thank you.
That is time, thank you. All right. Is that it for audience communication? With that, I'm gonna hand it back over to council, and if I may, just because one of the, the perks and one of the issues with being a council president is I, I can't talk as much, which is, a- as my wife would say, it's brilliant, just, just do this. But listen, I, I wanna pass the gavel, if I may, have the floor. You can take it, and we'll just throw it, but, may I have the floor?
You absolutely may.
All right. So here's the deal. Um, you know, I've sat, I've been writing notes, I've pondered, I, I spent a lot of time over the weekend, and anybody that knows me, I'll grab my ammo, which is Limoncello spritz, and I'll go to work, and I, I stayed up, especially, uh, this weekend, throughout the night, kinda just brainstorming. Anybody that doesn't know me, and this is, I'm beating it like a dead horse, but, you know, some people will think of me as always the nice guy that is always there. Um, I've built probably more municipal projects in this metro Detroit in the last 10 years on the municipal side than a lot of people. And I am gonna toot my own horn, because we've done it. I've, and I'm not saying that I, I'm, you know, I know everything, by no means, but I learn. You know, every one of those projects, I've seen pitfalls, and, and even I've brought them up in the meetings, I said, "You move a communication tower? You're looking at about $2 million. It's a non-sexy fix." You know, so if you can leverage it. So, um, coming from a nonprofit world, prior to that, Habitat for Humanity gave me my fiscal conservancy. Um, but at the same time, you have to spend money, good money, and it has to be fiscally responsible, and that is my holdup. Listen, I see the chief Johnson on the news, and yeah, our stations are in definite need, hundred percent. Do we need a new police station? I'll stand by it. If you want, go walk the building. Some of those pictures are just the tip of the iceberg, I promise you. Walk this building, right? You walk into the, you know, we got tiles that pop up because we get seismic activity from who knows where, and there's pops-up tiles there. And then you look upstairs, right? And you have an open, you know, all the way to the top, which is, it's beautiful, right? Talk about HVAC and how much money we're throwing out the window every single day, all right? So these things, I'm not gonna sit here and tell you why I agree with it, I agree with it. As a facilities director, as someone with a builder's license that's done this, this project that the mayor's brought up, I commend her and the team for bringing this forward. It is tough. However, I will tell you that the delivery and the rollout hasn't been great, right? It hasn't, but everybody in this room has passion, and I haven't heard anyone that says, "I don't want this," in some form, right? We're never gonna make everybody happy, but some of the things that we're kind of going in, and this is what I'm gonna task the administration, I know they're already working on it, is to get real information. Listen, we could have, uh, renderings and all that, no, I did do a good rollout, they did. However, we don't want, we, we're not gonna spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to give you the exact designed, you know, s- schematic design, design documents, construction drawings, because we gotta invest in that, it's gonna cost money. So the, the task is, is kind of interesting, because you wanna throw out an idea, you know, a scope, high level. But what we're getting, and I'll be completely honest, when I seen the last, um, when we had the last rollout at the Capitol Outlet, we had, um, 68 million leverage for police headquarters, right? And if you look at the square footage cost, I'm not gonna get into this, but that building came out to about 930 a square foot. Anybody that knows any kind of building construction, I can tell you that if you wanna use an arbitrary number, use 650, and some people in this room will say that that is overkill still. I think 650 is overkill, but it gives you the contingency. This is a generational project that I think we do need to take. Um, some of the views, and I'm gonna put them on record right now, um, and I have shared these, some of them with my colleagues, is after I looked at this, and I started looking at a hundred and fifty million dollars, with my knowledge base, I started going, all right, priorities, just like a CIP, Capital Improvement Program, you rank them, one through 20. I would say for me, public safety is number one and two, right? I would say that. We already took care of our city hall. Our city hall is bonded, we've got the money for that, we're ready to go. We built the senior center with no funds, we're ready to go. It's happening, whether it's gonna be this Christmas or next, whatever, it's being built. So when I talk about the, the, the complex, I take that, and I look at these numbers, and a lot of them are inflated, and that's okay, you wanna put pad on it. I think some of the pad is three to four times the amount that it should cost. That's the issue that I have. This is the game that I'm a subject matter expert in, and I know the numbers, and they're not jiving at all. So from my knowledge base, you could do a lot more with a hundred and fifty million dollars. You could. The way I looked at it, you could build that police station at the square footage that's listed on this program. You could do fire stations and even add more funding to it. We've got Fire Station One, which we had some additions on, but it still needs a ton. You have to understand that a lot goes into 2025 fire stations. You have what's called vehicle exhaust. We wanna make sure that we're, we're not exhausting into the bays. If you guys know what a plymoven is, see, this is what I do, so I'm trying to dumb it down. We have hoses hooked to all the trucks, so that the, basically, the exhaust is not gonna harm their, harm our, harm our firefighters as they're going out. Uh, gear washers, so the carcinogens, the, most of these stations probably don't have adequate gear washers, so our firefighters are probably using Home Depot specials to wash their gear. That's a problem, okay? Ladder trucks, all of that, and we've made reference to it. So I would look at prioritizing specifics on what you're going to put in each building. I kinda threw something out there, close to 29 million dollars. Then you look at the city center campus, you want an amphitheater, you want the park, you want utilities. The mayor's laid it out in two buckets, it was one for 19 million, there was one for 10. I think that 10 million was kinda spread out, I will say this, I'm gonna kinda call PMR out just slightly, because they were kinda, when you look at the square footage prices, it could include all limits of construction, in my opinion. That's the way that I learned from school, and that's the, the way that I've, uh, performed in the field when we would do these projects. Um, so I think that there's a lot of, and, and there's going to be. You're, you're gonna, you can't just come up with a number, but square footage based on these facilities is usually an accurate, accurate read. So then we've taken care of fire, we've got our city center, we've got civic center. I came out and I looked at a ton of extra money, and I started looking at it, someone brought up Noble Library, South Satellite, or South Community Center, that could be renovated for 5.2 million, we've talked about it. There's that option, we have Greenmade Master Plan. All right? You see where I'm going here? We have bikeways and pathways. So when I see the language being so narrow, you know, I know that there's a lot of mistrust in certain areas, but why not lay it out there, and if we are fiscally responsible and the economy does stay in tune, we have money with your guys' vote to take care of all these projects. And that's the kind of the vision that's gonna make this city the place to be. That 20-minute drive to downtown when you go catch a game, right? But guess what? We're gonna have this. And you can go to McCullough's Pub, because it's gonna be the hottest place in the world. So listen, I posted something on Facebook, and I blame it on Councilwoman Toy, 'cause she posted it first, and it went crazy, all right? It went off. But it was trying to get transparent, and for what it's worth, I know there's been a lot of mudfling and a lot of, there, the, the, the dialogues changed, you know, it got hit, social media went off, and everybody's kinda putting it in there. And right now, I think the best thing is to ratchet it back, come up with concise drawings and, and fiscal information, and I know I've had a talk with the administration, and that's what they're working on. And so for right now, today, um, I want to be a champion on this project, but these numbers and scope have to change somewhat, maybe a decent amount. But I think that this is something that I look at, my daughter, who's 10 years old, and I could say, this is the Livonia that's gonna be good for her. All right? Uh, with that being said, I have plans not to keep this off the ballot right now, because I think that I have 93,000 bosses out there that are gonna make this call in August. But with my time here, before I hand it back over, I am gonna just, I, I'm gonna look at the administration and say, "Let's do this. Let's look at these numbers, and let's put something out there that not everybody's gonna like, but something we can do." Because at the end of the day, guys, look at what you're sitting in. We could do so much better, and we all know it. So I, I'm gonna look everybody to have an open mind, and I'm really gonna push hard with the administration as your council president to ensure that we have some language on that bond that can work. So that's my nut, that's my two minutes in a nutshell, and I, I hope that you appreciate it.
Thank you. Counsel?
It was longer than two minutes.
Mr. Donavich.
Thanks, uh, Madam Chair, I got a question for the administration. I look at this from a fiscal standpoint, again, I'm, I'm discussing a bond, a municipal bond proposal here to fix our municipal buildings, but again, there's that discussion of the phase four, we heard from some of the residents talking tonight, and I kind of asked this question earlier, but I'm gonna phrase it a little differently, and maybe it is a different question, is, why don't we pay down the millage from that extra revenue that we would, we would garner from phase four with the private development? Because right now, this is city-owned land, we're not making any taxes off of this city-owned land, just like public school land and whatnot, but now we put private development on it, whether it be for sale or, or leasing to land, uh, leasing to, to, uh, business owners, which for the residents, we already are landlords. We already rent a number of buildings in our community, so we already operate in that landlord space. Um, but to my question, why can't we use some of that money and pay down the millage faster, or pay down a portion of it?
Sure. I'm gonna let Carter dive in on this one, because I think what you've got is a, an answer that, um, is perhaps a little bit more technical than what you may be expecting.
Yeah.
Um, it has a lot to do with, you know, when the tax base, i- it gets lowered, um, as a result of the money coming in that we're making on the property, you know, that does go toward our general fund, but also, um, we have some limitations around DDAs and TIFs and, you know, what you're describing, sounds a little bit like that.
Sure.
But, um, happy to let Carter answer.
Sure. So this is, this is something that we'll bat back and forth over the, the lifetime of this project, probably, um, and include our, our outside bond council as well on, on the sort of larger discussions at play here, but, um, to give a, a short of, sort, a, a, a short answer to this, um, the, the first thing is, if, if the, the property were sold and we were collecting tax on it, then those taxpayers would be paying into the millage, and they would lower, uh, the rates for everyone else. In terms of, uh, whether we do some kind of tax increment financing, uh, some kind of capture in that sense, typically, TIF financing, DDA financing goes towards the developments themselves. Um, so it would be for the build-out of that, that private area, not, exactly, not to pay down an already voted tax millage. Um, but, you know, these are things that we'll explore, we haven't decided on a structure for any of those things, that's, you know, beyond the horizon at this point, um, whether it'll be, whether we'll be selling, whether we'll be leasing, whether we'll be doing some combination of the above. Um, so it's a little bit premature to say for sure, one way or another, how, how they will contribute to the millage or sort of contribute to the financial health of the city going forward. Um, but, you know, i- if there were to be a sale, then obviously they would, uh, those developments would be paying property taxes along with everyone else, and, and would, uh, lower the, the burden on everyone else accordingly.
Sure. Thank you for that, and, uh, it's always good to have a city attorney on hand to answer those technical questions. I know there were some conversations about being up to refi, there were some conversations, since there's two series, I think, again, it's financially prudent that we're going out for two series as opposed to just one big hundred and fifty dollar, a hundred and fifty million dollar millage. We're getting multiple draws here, we're gonna save interest. I know one of the residents talked about, this is a hundred and fifty million dollar millage, but we're still paying interest payments, just like a traditional mortgage. So any potential for savings and interest, I'd, I'd rather us keep the money than give it to the bond market and the banks. So I'm happy that we're going out for those series. Can we talk about how that refi would work? We'd be eligible to refi at a certain point without prepayment penalties and whatnot?
Correct. Yep.
Correct. Yeah, we, we would be eligible at a certain point in the horizon of the bonds. I just wanna talk briefly, because the resident asked a question about whether that would be a 25 and a 23-year series. Um, both would be issued in 25-year series, so the bonds are 25 years from the date of issuance of the bond, meaning the, the first hundred million or so would be 25 years from the issuance of that bond, and then the second 50 million paid over the 25 years from the issuance of that second series. Um, but both series would be eligible for refi at some point, um, and we would obviously be looking to do that when the interest rates have, have lowered, so that we could recognize those savings.
Sure. And to the mayor, through the chair, is it reasonable, the question came about maintenance, we already have a maintenance cost, we incur those maintenance costs all the time, just like any real estate does, is it fair to say that the maintenance costs are not gonna be as heavy as they are on a new constructed building with less deferred maintenance than it would be a building that has brick falling off the side of it and, and floors buckling and whatnot?
Yeah. I think that's all very reasonable to assume, um, and if you want, uh, we can have our friends from Plant Moran address that, because this is a big part of what they do, and a big part of how, when we put together the bond proposal, there were some things that we did not look at as savings in terms of being ultra-conservative. Um, we did not look at energy cost savings, we did not look at reduced cost of maintenance as part of the savings, uh, but we know that those are all going to be elements of this, and we know that with new construction, there's gonna be better HVAC systems than there are currently. We know that we won't have the type of maintenance issues that you mentioned in a new building, so there will be cost savings, but let's see if, uh, our friends here can help us to understand a little bit more and put some color around it for you.
Thank you. And then I will say, while we're waiting for the residents, we did receive a preliminary budget that is in the council packet, again, all available online, so if you're interested to look at some of the preliminary numbers, uh, broken down in certain phases or aspects of the project, it is available online.
Thanks, Madam Vice President. Um, we'll, we'll let you go ahead and introduce yourself.
Sure. Um, excuse me, Paul Terrio with, uh, Plant Moran Real Point. Um, yeah, so on the operation and maintenance side, as the mayor mentioned, obviously, new buildings mean new mechanical systems that are more efficient, more insulation in the walls, the roofs, uh, you know, uh, more, more efficient lighting systems and lighting controls, temperature controls, things of that, uh, nature, uh, fixtures that use less water. Um, also, a big part of this, that I think's probably, uh, undervalued, is these new buildings are significantly smaller than what we're in now. This building's about 90,000 square feet, the new city hall's gonna be about 55,000 square feet, so if you look at more efficient systems in a building that's almost half as big as the existing one, there's gonna be some really big operation and maintenance savings for the city, which could then go back into a capital projects fund to help with maintenance costs at other buildings. So, um, same thing with the library, the library is gonna be significantly smaller, significantly more efficient, uh, especially putting it with city hall. Now there's less surface area of, of skin of the exterior of the building, there's a lot of shared spaces, we're hoping we can even drive the square footage down more than that, uh, but obviously, the design's just getting started, so I think there's a, a huge upside, uh, from operation and maintenance perspective.
Sir, when we're calculating square footage, is a question that's been asked to me, for example, city hall, uh, when we're calculating that square footage, we're not calculating dead airspace, right? The atrium, you know, five stories, we're, we're count, we're, we're counting that as actual square footage of a floor plate, correct?
Correct. Yep, not the volume of the space, which would even make it a bigger discrepancy.
Okay. I think that's all my questions for now. Thanks, Madam Vice President.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Sheil.
I have questions for the mayor.
For who?
For the mayor.
For the mayor. Don't go far, Paul, though, you might, you know.
So just a general question, uh, one of the residents has asked about, um, the phase four, whether it'll be sold or leased. Phase four is going to, that'll come before next councils, correct? That's not something that we decide at this council level, it'll come forward in a few years.
Yeah, I think that's a really good point. It could come at any point in time, actually, you know, once you were successful in securing public support for this. But the intent is that it will, everything has to, it's not even an intent. By law, it all has to come before you again for approval. If land were to be placed for sale, before it's placed for sale, it comes before you. Somebody asked a question earlier, is the Alfred Nobel Library for sale? You haven't seen a for-sale item, have you?
No.
No, then it is not for sale. Okay? By law, it has to come before you the disposition of any property. Contracts, leases, all have to come before the city council for approval.
Okay. So, anything on phase four would have to come before a future council?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Donavich.
Mayor, why not separate? I know there's been some conversations, and we've talked about this at committee meetings, but for the sake of the discussion here, why not separate this millage out, just a millage for the PD and FDS and separate millage for the library and so on and so forth?
Because it is one big project. One of the things that we have the most difficulty with is in separating the infrastructure and the civil improvements that come with each piece. I mean, we know that, we need that big greenway to connect the entire campus. Everybody shares in that cost and yet it's going to have to be developed. We believe so much that the library is central to our ability to really catalyze that open space, that central gathering area, that we want people to get to decide on a new library. We've seen also enough deficiency in the library that the cost of just bringing it up to some good standard gets far too close to the cost of a new building. It just doesn't make sense to separate them and we ultimately would not be fixing the whole problem. This is bold. This is transformational. This is why the federal government and the county government and the state government gave us twenty million dollars to build that senior center, because they knew that it was the catalyst for us to do something ultimately transformational in our community, making us a regional destination. And our ability to do that hinges on getting all of it done. So, it is bold. It's a little bit risky, to your point, Mr. Donavich, that if we find people that are adamantly opposed to a new library, that, you know, this could fail as a result of it. We don't happen to believe that that's the case. We really believe that there are a lot of library users out there that see the value in a modern, state-of-the-art, smaller, more efficient, more user-friendly library.
Counsel, Ms. Toy.
Just a real quick comment, if I may. I think, you know, as we spell this out, I think it gets confusing for some folks and not everybody, you know, operates at certain levels. So, the simpler we can make it, is, I know everybody's trying to do, and I just had mentioned to Rob, maybe we should wait a couple of weeks before and explain it more, but we, you know, you can't get into enough people to explain it. And, and that's not saying you're for it or against it, I'm just saying, there's a lot of confusion because of this, that, and the other thing. And as you know, I live in the neighborhood right across the street and my door gets knocked on, what are we doing? You know, what, what's happening? And I try and explain it the best I can. And so, if not, I tell them to call your office.
And that's a good answer. That's a good answer.
Yeah, so that's, you know, I just wanted to convey that, that it can be confusing. I've heard it like three or four times now and I appreciate it, but it's, it's, it can be kind of confusing to folks, that's all.
So, here's the beauty of this, is that every time we meet and we gather in this environment, we learn more and we, as a leadership team, are able to even fine-tune where the angst comes from. And you'll see on lavonia.gov, I believe is the, yep, not gov, not org, org, lavonia.org, let's get it right, lavonia.org. We are assem, pardon me?
Lavoniabuilt.org.
Lavoniabuilt.org. See, I need that slide up there. We are assembling a list of these questions. Not each and every question, they fall into buckets, so we can provide some broader answers that help more people to understand it. But through the course of time, between when you as a council vote to place this on the ballot and when people actually get a chance to get out there and render their opinion on it, there's a lot of education that's gonna take place. And we fully intend to, to use all of our opportunities through our Connections magazine, through our website, through some, you know, some town hall meetings that we're gonna be hosting. There'll be a lot of ways to help people to understand the scope of the project. What I've appreciated most about these interactions with council, though, is that you've been willing to get down into the technical details with us. And what's most important in the decision that's before all of you now, is that you do understand that because you have spent so much time on it and you can really exercise responsible leadership in placing this on the ballot before voters, knowing that you have asked all the most important questions and you have. You've asked exceptionally, exceptionally good questions. And quite honestly, forced us to get to a couple of spots that we didn't see ourselves getting. So, first one, Neheazel Park. Originally, when you all first saw one of the very preliminary designs, Neheazel Park was moved, if you recall.
Right.
You, as a council, came together at various times and places and said, could you reconsider that? Is there a way to make that work? We went back to the drawing board and guess what? We not only figured out how to just keep it where it is, we figured out how to make it an enhancement to the property. You all pushed really hard on can we get that millage as low as we possibly can? And it was that pushing that got to the creative solution of a two-series bond issuance. That's ultimately what drove that price down. So, when I talk about this being an amazingly collaborative effort, again, I, I believe that it is, because I believe your questions reflect the questions that you're getting from your constituents. And that in turn has influenced and affected and now today, I truly believe, brings you the best project that we could possibly bring you.
Thank you.
Counsel?
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Do we have direction, counsel?
Madam Vice President?
Mr. Donavich.
So, this has been a long time now. I know Councilman Toy and I were just having a little sidebar about having another committee meeting and discussing this further. We've had, it's gotta be sixteen or seventeen committee meetings now on this. Now, we're at the stage of a study meeting where the council makes some sort of decision for the regular meeting that will take place April twenty-eighth, April twenty-eighth. So, tonight we'll offer a motion, but that motion will not be voted on until the twenty-eighth meeting. That could be a denying approving, a committee option. I'm not, I, I'm satisfied to move forward. I do not want to offer a committee option. I think we've discussed this for hours and hours at great length. It's, it's almost eleven o'clock tonight. We still have another nine items on the agenda tonight that we still have to, as a council, talk about. And I'm ready to move forward on this. I, it, it doesn't bring me great joy. It, it, you know, in one way, it, it turns my stomach, right? I mean, a resident mentioned earlier about, it's not just twelve dollars a month or eighteen dollars a month. DTE's raising their prices on us. We heard, we heard consumers are gonna be raising their prices on us. Water rates, and that, that's a pass-through from the city. We don't even make money on the water rate, so to speak. That's a pass-through through our water vendors. And Councilman Toy has been fighting that battle for many years as a state legislator and now as a local legislator. So, I, it always brings me pause. One of the residents talked about, well, the county gave us this money, the federal government gave us this money, but I still gave them the money. And that's true. Now, we all know as a city, if we don't take those federal, state, and county dollars, they're gonna give them to another community. And there's been a lot of discussion and Councilman Toy's taught me that over the years. When I first got on council, I was very frustrated with the money of why we're taking this tax dollar money. ARPA dollars was a big thing. I was always at me against that, but you realize that if we don't take that money, then they're gonna give it to another city. So, we're, all we're doing is handcuffing our residents when that money is available and that's what grants and those, those dollars are. So, now we talk about adding a millage on the residents and I was asking our city attorney if he could send us the millage language from nineteen ninety-nine when we passed the millage for the rec center. And I was looking through those documents and it's, it's interesting to look at those council members back there that had that same question poised to them is, are you really going to vote for a tax increase? And, and when I think through it and try to justify the investment in our community, one way or another, we're gonna have to invest in these buildings. And I've separated these two on purpose because they are separate. They're connected, but they're separate from a council perspective. I'm voting on a municipal facilities proposal to invest in these municipal buildings. And I'm sick and tired of investing money into old buildings that are falling apart. Time and time again, this council has another proposal brought to us to invest a million here, fifty thousand here, a hundred thousand here, half a million here, and we keep throwing all these good tax dollars towards bad buildings. They're either function obsolete, they're too big, they were built at a time that doesn't have the standards we have today. And a great question was brought up by a resident, are we gonna be in the same spot twenty-five years from now or forty years from now on these buildings if they're, if they're passed by the, by the public? I hope not, right? With today's construction and the way things are built nowadays, I just think we as a society and construction are just more advanced and, and these buildings will, were more thoughtful now. They're thoughtfully designed by, by experts like PMR and our construction manager and architects and master planners. I just think there's more due diligence done today in construction than there was back in the seventies or eighties. We were at a time when we built city hall, we thought the expansion of Southfield was gonna come this way, we're gonna have massive buildings everywhere and skyscrapers and we know how that worked out. So, i- in one way, it doesn't bring me great joy by doing this, but another way, my job is to be a fiscal steward and, and, and think about the long-term parameters here and, and I'm done putting money into these old buildings. And I, I just don't know how we get past that without, without doing this. We have to have the money come from somewhere. I think that it's incumbent upon the administration to pitch to the residents between April and August of, is this, is this a fiscal, fiscally sound decision? Is this a smart choice to make? Because ultimately, the residents, the taxpayers, the investors in this project and the project is our municipal buildings. So, either way, residents are gonna be investing in these buildings one way or another, whether this is denied or whether, whether it's approved. If it's denied, we're gonna take money away from something else in the community, we're gonna stop negotiating with, and negotiate with our bargaining unions as aggressively as we have been because we can't afford it, because we're gonna have to pay for these things in other ways. So, that's kind of where I'm at, I'm looking at the totality of it all. And that's just kind of my thought to the residents. I just want, I want you to know where I'm kind of coming from and for it to be on the record. I could talk about another, talk about this for another three hours, really, and ask more questions and, and talk about things. So, it's, it's a lot, it's a lot to wrap my mind around as a city council member and, and I hope you know, it doesn't bring me any joy, right? I mean, I'm gonna offer an approving resolution for municipal facilities proposal, bad language, and it, it doesn't bring me great joy, but I know, at least in my mind, that fast forward thirty years from now, fifty years from now, the residents will also be saving money on their taxes. So, that's the way I look at it. So, Madam Vice President, I'd like to offer an approving for the municipal facilities bond proposal.
On the regular?
On the regular.
Thank you. We have an approving on the regular. Okay. I think we can finally move to agenda item number two. Mr. President, would you care to have the gavel back? You can have a bash.
Thank you, counsel.
Mr. Chair, if I may. I am not gonna go on as long as he did. He explains it very well.
Where's all, where's all the council candidates going? We need them back here. All right? You're sticking with us till the end.
I think I've learned their lesson.
Not until next meeting.
Next meeting.
Next meeting.
Next meeting on the twenty-eighth will be the voting meeting on this.
Funny lady.
Listen, I'm not gonna move here. Moving on to item number two, is a request for the authorization to purchase one lifeline type-one superliner ambulance. This comes to us from our friends over at Lavonia Fire and Rescue for the replacement of an ambulance in the vehicle replacement program from budgeted funds. Chief Genison is in the house.
I never thought it would get to me.
I didn't either.
Give it time.
Thank you, President. Thank you, everyone. Yeah, the fire department is requesting to purchase a 2027 or newer lifeline ambulance through R&amp;R Firetruck as part of our replacement program. Unfortunately, due to significant backlogs in construction, we're still three years out if we order this today. This vehicle would be provided through the Houston Galveston area council, so it's cooperative purchase. So, we ask to waive the formal bidding process and make the purchase from budgeted funds.
Absolutely. Yes.
If I may, Chief.
Well, for sure.
What happens to the old one? The old?
So, we have a replacement program that our five frontline ambulances staff our five fire stations. We just put one in service last year. It moves down to the first reserve, first to second, second to third, third to fourth. And then once we're, I think the one that we just put out of service is about thirteen years old now, thirteen to fourteen, a hundred and forty thousand miles. It goes to either auction or trade-in or donated or scrapped, whatever the best advantage for the city is, and that's in the, in the proposal.
And I bring that forward because a lot of folks at home and in the audience don't, don't know that process, so thank you for explaining it.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
No problem. Counselor, do I have direction?
I'll offer an approving on consent.
There we go. We have an approving on consent. And just to point out, when you say that you're waiving the formal bid process, you're going, you're, you've got the cooperative purchasing agreement.
We have cooperative purchasing.
So, when everybody sears that, they're like, hey, we're just going with it. No.
According to the ordinance.
We're leveraging, yes. Chief Genison is being way too professional on this. Long story short, they found the best deal that's out there through the cooperative purchasing, so we're leveraging the best funds.
Yes, sir.
So, any other questions from counsel? Anything from the audience? Chief, you've got, you're all but assured.
Very good.
All right.
See you in two weeks.
See you in two weeks.
Or something else.
All right. Item number three is an award of bid. This comes to us from the Lavonia Housing Commission in reference to the replacement of the makeup, makeup air system at building two of McNamara Towers using funds allocated by the Community Development Block Grant Program.
Good evening, councilmembers. Madison Beartness here on behalf of the Housing Commission, here to seek approval for the replacement of the makeup air system at building two of the McNamara Towers through budgeted funds. The last time this was replaced was in two thousand eight and the low bid here was line mechanical for sixty thousand two hundred and three dollars.
Counsel. So, move on consent?
Consent, yep.
I will tell you that the packet was put together very well. Kudos to you. And you are the new housing director, right?
Yes.
Are you happy to be here? First time on council.
I am happy to be here.
We're just trying to, listen, if we weren't here for sixty-two hours, I would, we'd probably mess with you a little bit more, but you have an approving on consent. Any, any questions from the audience? Seeing none, we'll see you in a couple of weeks if you wanna hang out here for the regular. If not, your item should be all but assured to pass. Item number four is an award of bid, comes to us from the Department of Parks and Recreation in reference to replacement of the leisure pool decking at the Jackie Kurgsky Recreation Center from budgeted funds. This is Ted Davis, Director of Parks and Recreation and Cultural Services.
Thank you, Council President, for helping me there.
No problem.
I appreciate it. We are coming before city council, asking for renovation of the leisure pool decking. It's been a few years since we did this project. We're never really happy with the outcome previously done in two thousand nineteen. We're asking that council award to the sole qualified bidder on this Midwest Pools for a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. The pool would be closed during the summer, July fifth, I believe is what I put down. We're closing right after July fourth and we'll open up second week of August. I'm happy to answer any questions council might have on this.
Counsel Manonovic.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Davis, thanks for being here this evening. I'm a little frustrated because I feel like we've been putting a lot of money into these pools and having issues over the last few years. Do you think we're gonna have any more issues? What's your, what's your game plan here?
Well, this isn't an issue. This is just reinvestment in our facilities. I mean, a brand-new indoor pool would cost us, I mean, the one at the rec center would cost us north of fifteen million dollars. So, again, coming back, adding features, refinishing, you know, the pool decking or redoing Marsight or Diamond Bright, you know, refurbishing the water slide, this is just simply the cost of doing business. I mean, that's how we keep these facilities up to date, relevant, and in good repair. So, pools are never moneymakers and they are expensive to maintain, but again, I remember all too well when, with the liner project in the end of nineteen and the beginning of twenty and how this community reacted to losing the leisure pool. And I'm sure, I'm sure a lot of councilmembers remember that. Jim Jolly at the time once said, if you'd have asked me what the heart of Lavonia was Jim Jolly, at the time, once said, if you'd have asked me what the heart of Livonia was during all that, he would have said the leisure pool at the rec center was the heart of the city. So, again, we, these are investments. It's not, you know, it's not that we're having issues. We're simply trying to maintain these and keep these first-rate facilities.
Great answer. I'll offer an approving on consent. There's no objection from my colleagues.
Any issues, counsel? Any comments? Anything from the audience? All right. Moving on to item number five is an award of bid, comes to us again from the Parks and Recreation in reference to the water slide refurbishment at the Jackie Kurski Recreation Center.
Thank you, Council President. Ted Davis, again, representing Parks and Recreation. This is, again, water slide refurbishment. These amenities are twenty-plus years old. We, a couple of years ago, we did new bolts on this. This is a refinishing of the slide and reexamination of the bolts and coating the bolts that might have rust on the surface. We're asking for council to award the bid to, not the low bidder in this case, but to Slide Guys Restoration for seventy-two thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars, based upon our previous experience with them and their positive job references.
Councilman Morgan first.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to offer an approving on consent.
All right. We've got an approving on consent. Councilman Toy?
I was just going to say an approving because you don't want to go down that slide if it's not in good condition.
No.
At least I don't. I don't.
But you're all invited to go down the slide whenever you want.
Am I allowed back at the rec center, then?
No.
I think your suspension ends in about fifty-eight minutes.
All right. Councilman Donavich.
Mr. Davis, I noticed, you know, in the packet, we're not going with the lowest bidder, but we're going with the most qualified bidder.
Yes.
And, you know, ultimately, with my frustration with some of the pools over the years, it's good that we're going for a contractor that's going to do the job right the first time as opposed to just the lowest, the lowest bid we see out there. So, I just think it's something interesting to know and touch on that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. So, we have an approving on consent, correct?
Yes.
All right. Anything from counsel? Anything from the audience?
Uh-uh.
All right. Mr. Davis, you did it.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Mr. Davis.
Have a good night.
I'm not done.
You're not done?
He's not done.
He's not done?
Good evening, Mr. Moore. I'm going to jump in on an intro. We're on item number six is a request to amend the council resolution three sixty-two four, comes to us from the Department of Public Works to accurately reflect the monies quoted for the twenty-five, 2025 through the 2028 calendar year requirements for the portable toilet program from budgeted funds.
Evening, counsel. Doug Moore with DPW. Counsel, I was here back in October twenty twenty-four for this program, for the 2025 to 2028 PortaJohn contract. When the resolution was written for this program, unfortunately, a bid tab was looked at incorrectly. It was only for one year, so we've got enough funding to cover the first year. We actually need to write a new resolution to cover the funding for all four years. The total price for the four years is five hundred twenty-four thousand, nine hundred thirty-four dollars and twenty-two cents. Nothing changes. It's the same contractor. The per-unit pricing is the same. It's just the bottom-line amount that we got to get fixed.
Counsel Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Moore, I know we talked about this back in the fall. Are these handicap units or ADA compliant units? Because they're not, that's not the same thing necessarily. So, I just want to make sure.
They are.
The ADA ones?
Yes.
Okay. Because we have to make sure that, you know, we have wheelchair and walker usage. Also, why no ADA units at Devon Air or the golf courses at a while in Whispering Wells when I was looking at the packet?
So, Devon Air, we could look at having one put in there. That was added much later than the original bid. When it originally, when the program originally started in 2005, 2006, there was no unit at Devon Air. Through the years, Devon Air Softball asked for a unit to be added, so we put a unit out there. If a handicap unit is wanted, we can do that. The golf courses, they looked at starting to get rid of some of the units out there if they're needed. We can talk to Doug Ware, he's the superintendent, and see what they'd like.
Yeah. I just, I just want to make sure because I know by law, five percent of all our units have to be ADA compliant. And so, I don't know if that means citywide or if that means per location, so I just want to make sure we're covered.
Right.
So, I'll be happy to offer this on the regular, and then maybe you can just find out real quick. That'd be great.
Sure.
Offer approving on the regular.
We have an approving on the regular, counsel. Any other questions? Anything from the audience? All right. Moving on to-
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Moore. Item number seven is an award of bid from the Engineering Division in reference to the Newburgh Road sidewalk extension project from Pembroke Avenue to Joshua and Simmons Drive from budgeted funds. Mr. Zalinsik?
Yes. Yep. Again, thank you, Council President, city council members. Replacing a six-foot sidewalk from Pembroke Drive, which is at the Postal Service, up to Greenmead, Joshua and Simmons Drives, to hopefully have a crossing to Tin Cup, which should then connect up to on the east side of Newburgh Road. As you're also aware, there's nine homes being built on the east side of Newburgh Road, which will have connectivity up to that location, and then we have a small portion that we talked about previously to get that constructed. So, hopefully, we'll have connectivity along that corridor to the west side by the United States Postal Service up to Pembroke and over to Tin Cup. We had fifteen bids submitted on March eighteenth. Joe Rotundo Construction was the lowest bidder at one forty-five, eight fourteen forty. The bidder's preference is at one forty-one, four three nine, thirty-seven. The bids range from that quote all the way up to three hundred twenty-seven thousand, six fourteen forty-four. So, we are asking for your approval to let them go ahead with the bike-walk plan to construct that portion, make it six foot wide, help out for the future events that may occur, Light Festival, Irish Festival, all the good stuff that happens out there.
Wearing the kilt, rocking, man.
So, appreciate your help to take advantage of this and get this constructed this spring, summer. Take advantage of that. Thank you.
Councilman Morgan.
Yeah, I'd like to offer an approving on consent.
We have an improvement on consent, and I think it's fair. I think Councilman Donavich.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to our engineering department. Hats off to your department for prioritizing connectivity over that area. It's something this council's heard a lot about over the years, is connecting Eight Mile through Greenmead with all the activities we have Greenmead. I thought it was important, and I'm happy that this is happening. I'm very happy to see Joe Rotundo Construction doing this. They do all of our sidewalks as it is. I wish this would have just been included with the sidewalk program. I mean, they're doing our sidewalks. They do a phenomenal job, but that's here and there. I think your department's doing a phenomenal job, and thanks for doing this, Mr. Zalinsik. And to Rotundo's, I know they're here in the audience tonight. They've been here from the beginning. I don't think I have any tough questions for them, but I'm happy to see that they stay here tonight and made sure if we do have any questions. But Rotundo's do a great job with our sidewalks, and engineers do a great job of planning to fix our sidewalks in its community, and that's a big thing. So, thank you, guys. Thanks for your support.
You know why? Because you're Italian.
You're Italian? What? No, I must point out, too, because, listen, we do a lot, and there's times where, and I'm not trying to belabor this, but, listen, Rotundo is in the audience, stuck through this, it's been a long night, and it shows you through the competitive bid process on how competitive they keep their prices and goes along with the workmanship, and it's warranted. So, when we see these things that say Rotundo is going to keep, you know, the unit prices for three more years, this gives us, you know, the ability to say, hey, these are the great people, and it proves it. So, thank you, guys. Any questions from the audience on the sidewalk extensions for item number seven? Seeing none, moving on to item number eight is an award of bid, again, comes to us from the Engineering Division, reference to Country Home, Country Homes Park sidewalk installation from budgeted funds. Mr. Zalinsik?
I want to punt it over to Ted, even though Mr. Lear helped assist in the endeavor, but-
Wait, is that Ted Davis?
Mr. Davis-
Parks and Recreation Director from Cultural Services?
He can speak more in tune with the improvements at the parks. Thanks.
Hello, Council President. Ted Davis, representing Engineering Division and Parks and Recreation. So, this is a community development block grant project to add sidewalks at Country Homes Park. So, this would be a project that would be adding sidewalks down Yale Street and connecting to existing amenities at the park. This coincides with our ADA transition plan, and these are projects we're checking off the list every single year, thanks to Housing Department and Engineering assisting with this. So, we are asking that council award this to the low bidder, low qualified bidder on this project, Golden Gate Constructions LLC, for an amount not to exceed fifty-one thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents. I'm happy to answer any questions council might have on this project.
Thank you. Councilman Morgan.
Fifty cents? Yeah, actually, I didn't look at that, but okay. Yeah, that sounds, let me, give me one minute here. I don't know why you picked me.
No, 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 no. I thought you had your hand up. Anybody else? Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, this is much needed. I think this is a great project. I'll be happy to offer an approving on consent.
All right. Any other comments from counsel? Anything from the audience? All right. Moving on to item number nine is an award of bid, comes to us again from the Engineering Division, maybe Ted Davis, we're not sure, in reference to the Clement Circle Park walking path renovations from budgeted funds. Mr. Zalinsik, punt it over to Ted Davis, Director of Parks and Recreation and Cultural Services.
Ted, take us home.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Zalinsik and Council President McCullough.